The mayor to open us up in prayer, so if everybody would stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you again for this day. Thank you for the opportunity that we have to come and serve our community. We're especially thankful today with Veterans Day coming up and some of the programs that we've already had thus far this year, that we live in the country that we live in, that we're free to come together and to speak to you and talk about you and talk about your plan for our lives. We ask that you be with us throughout this meeting. Give us wisdom to do anything that needs to be done. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome everybody to the council meeting today. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, getting started with our agenda. We've got citizen participation. Before we have Frida Waters come up, I'm going to ask John Dursen to come up.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having me. Appreciate it. I have an invitation for you folks today. You may have seen it in the Time Journal this morning, but DeKalb Tourism is hosting Governor Ivy on Friday next week, November 15th, at nine o'clock at Low River Canyon National Preserve. And it is her official bicentennial for DeKalb County. So what she's doing now, she's going to all 67 counties sometime during the course of this year, and this is ours. And we're very honored to have her ask DeKalb Tourism to welcome her. We're going to have a 20 minute, we have 20 minutes with us. And then she's moving on to Cherokee County. It's going to be a nice little program, and she'll talk about the bicentennial, and I hope all of you can attend.
What time is it, John?
Hey, Martin?
What time?
Nine o'clock a.m. on Friday, November 15th. And she's known to be very timely, so she'll be there. And love to see you there. And it's for the entire community, so I want to invite the entire community to come, and the entire county, actually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also want to ask Cynthia Hancock with the library, she has an announcement. I'd like for her to come and go ahead and make that announcement.
Thank you. In the theme on Veterans Day, we are very excited to have Captain Roger Hale coming to do a presentation for us on November the 16th. He is the author of Dog Company, and he has been featured on Sean Hannity and Glenn Beck has endorsed his book as well as The Washington Post. And also, Sean Hannity has a foreword of his book. It took me three months to get Captain Hale to book for our library, and he will have several copies of his book, and he's going to do a presentation for us on Saturday, November the 16th, beginning at 1:30. And I spoke with him this morning, and he said that he would stick around as long as he has people around to sign books and to talk. And I'd appreciate it if all of you could make it. Take the ballgames, because it will be well worth your while to meet Captain Hale. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to our agenda, I'd like to introduce Frida Waters. Let her come and address the council. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. What we're going to talk to you about today is this Senate bill, 183. In the 2019 session of legislature, this Senate bill was introduced, taking away municipality's authority to regulate pet retail sales and to repeal any existing ordinances. The bill was filed on behalf of Petland, which is a national pet store chain that sells dogs and cats from puppy mills and catteries. Fortunately, it did not pass. It was opposed by the League of Municipalities, the Alabama League of Veterinary Medical Association, the Humane Society of the United States, and the National Animal Patrol Association. It is expected that this bill will be reintroduced in the upcoming legislative session in February of 2020. And today, I'm here representing the Humane Society. We have the Friends of Animals for the Adoption Center here with us today, Daisy Spade, and Mindy Gilbert, who is with the Humane Society of the United States. And it's my understanding, and also Catherine Dallenberg, who is a rescue person. She's been rescuing animals and volunteering for the Humane Society for a number of years now. And it's my understanding that President Harcrow, Ricky Harcrow, with the commission, that he is very much in favor of seeing an ordinance passed as well. The cities that have passed the ordinance already are Athens, Huntsville, Gunnersville, Tuscaloosa, Arad, Anniston, and Boas. And other cities that are considering passing are Decatur, Muscle Shoals, Florence, Coleman, Parsville, and Birmingham. The city of Fort Payne already has the burden of managing pet overpopulation, and local tax dollars are being spent every year sheltering and euthanizing thousands of animals here at our local shelters. So we feel that the city, or our taxpayers, that we should not support the import of dogs out of state that come from these puppy mills. And if the city doesn't take action, there's a possibility we could see lower adoption rates and higher euthanasia rates at our local shelter, and in turn, also an increase in tax dollars that have to be spent as well every year. We would hope that no one here, you know, would also would support the inhumane practices that take place at these puppy mills. This is a very straightforward ordinance. It's not going to interfere with a breeder. It's not going to interfere with anyone's rights to, if they choose to go out and purchase a dog from a breeder, they can still do so. At the present time, we only have one pet retail store here in Fort Payne. It is a franchise store, but they could choose to source animals from outside of the state that, you know, come from these puppy mills. And that would also impact our local shelter. All of the rescue groups represented here today, you know, we spend enormous amounts of time and physical and emotional energy rescuing, fostering, caring, adopting, and spaying and neutering thousands of animals yearly. Other than the Animal Patrol Agency, you know, we do it on our own time, and we have to raise our own funds to do so as well. I think it's safe to say that, you know, all of these rescue groups represented here today, we've all been impacted, and we've all interacted with these animals, these puppies that come out of these puppy mills. And, you know, not one of us here today wants to support the cruel practices or the lifetime of misery that these animals suffer from, that are in these puppy mills. I brought a couple of examples, well, a voter information packet for you that has two of the ordinance is in it. They're very simple, very straightforward.
What will the ordinance do?
Well, it will allow the city to regulate the pet sales.
Stay in patches that supersede the city?
Well, that's a question that Lenny might...
Can I answer that?
Yes, please.
Do you mind? May I have permission?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Nikki Gilbert. I'm from Jasper, Alabama. And I work for the Humane Society of the United States. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you a little bit. As Frida mentioned, Senate Bill 183 was introduced on a Tuesday afternoon, removing municipal authority. But last fall, Huntsville was the first city to pass an ordinance that prohibited retail pet stores from selling commercially bred animals and limited them to offering the resources that they currently do to help local homeless animals. There was a committee substitute to Senate Bill 183 on the following day that exempted any municipalities that already passed the ordinance, which is why there has been a little bit of an effort going into the next legislative session for municipalities to join together to do this, to, A, retain your municipal authority, to, B, obviously, in the interest of animal welfare, C, to preserve that model that we have now. There's only one Petland store in the state of Alabama. It's in Montgomery. It's been there for a while. But we enjoy, in most of our cities, some representation of the other international chains, which would be PetSmart, Petco, Pet Depot, Pets Plus Plus, and all of them choose to adopt a model of not selling commercially bred animals, but making resources available to local agencies to help them place their animals, whether it be adoption space in the store, promotions, specialty events, that sort of thing. So we have seen this bill emerge in Texas, Oklahoma, Tennessee, Georgia, Kentucky, Arkansas, Florida, for multiple years. We've been beating them back. I feel that the League of Municipalities will have a little more skin in the game, so to speak, with a roster of municipalities that have taken a stand and said, we want to retain our authority, we want to do what's right for our community animals. And that's kind of what this ask is about, for your consideration, to see if you might consider going down. In addition to the puppy mill issue, the CDC launched an 18-month investigation that was concluded last year that involved an investigation into an outbreak of a multi-drug-resistant strain of Campylobacter in humans. It involved 17 states, 113 people, 23 hospitalizations, and the source of the outbreak was handling of puppies at a Petland store in Georgia that came from puppy mills. As a consequence of that investigation, earlier this spring, a federal class action suit was filed on behalf of Petland employees, many of those who also have become critically ill with drug-resistant strains of bacteria that are directly sourced to those animals. So it's kind of a public safety issue, too. And the good news is, it doesn't cost anything to do. It's proactive, and if I can answer any questions, I'll be happy to, and I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Watson, you've got in your package, there is a suggested...
Sample ordinances. I can give you as many as you like. I'll be glad to leave my card with somebody. I think that the Anniston is relatively simple. It's a one-pager. Tuscaloosa is a one-pager. Huntsville's a little more in-depth. But in the end, it just has to do with who qualifies for a business life study mill pets to a model.
Thank you.
We can change them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frida. We appreciate it. Okay, moving right along. Do we have any committee reports? I know we had a meeting yesterday with the Parks and Rec about Christmas in the Park coming up. Remind everybody that is the first Friday in December, December the 6th, is that right? Sixth, seventh? Whatever the first Friday is.
What are we looking at?
Sixth. Anybody else got a committee report? Any other committees?
I've been notified, the office on information that Jason Diggs, the manager of DC Gas, reported to me a few days ago, had a resignation on the board, so there is a vacancy that exerts president of DC Gas. So there will be less than a year left on the term.
I think when we got that news the other day, I think we got less than a year left on that term. It's a four-year appointment, and I don't think it would be anything, we'd need to throw somebody in the last bit here to try to get your feet wet. And since Ryan's not serving on any board, I think we fill that slot for the remainder of this term, but Ryan seems willing to do it.
I'd be willing.
Make that motion there.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Motion carried. Okay. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2019-33 is authorizing Watson and Needy to proceed with any and all actions necessary regarding Amendment 772 as it relates to Valley Joyce Project off Jordan Road.
Did y'all know this? What we're doing with Valley Joyce requires Rockyville, basically, to sue us.
Sue ourselves.
Sue ourselves. At least we sue the people now. And this authorizes they will do what they need to do.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next is Resolution 2019-42, authorizing the application for state matching funds for an airport improvement project.
This project, this resolution authorizes the engineering firm, Fars, to proceed with the design for next year's project, which is Apron Payton, I believe it is. Apron Payton.
Well, we do need some work done on Apron out there, so I make a motion to approve it.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Our cost of admission would be minimal, less than $5,000.
Okay, motion carried. Resolution 2019-43, declaring certain police department vehicle surplus. Do you know what we're...
This is the two, Dodge, Shore. Make a motion.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. New business, authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the city of Fort Payne and the Fort Payne Board of Education concerning the use of the new additional tennis courts. For those of you that don't know, the tennis courts, they're putting at the high school, adding four additional courts up there, for a total of eight courts, courts at the high school, resurfacing the old tennis courts.
And they'll be open for public use?
Yes.
When the school isn't using them?
Good partnership between us and the school, save us quite a bit of money and help them with the two.
I'll make a motion to do it.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Authorize bids for a skid steer mulcher for the public works department. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, discussion about the upcoming holiday schedule and the consideration of the one-time paid adjustment.
Remind us what we did last year on the holidays and the pay-in.
Six fifty for full-time. We got the split of stuff. Six fifty for full-time. Four fifty for part-time. We had a little confusion last year. We got very confused. Trying to define...
Can we simplify it?
...constitute a part-time employee. You know, you say part-time, that's the thing, less than 40 hours a week. You know, we have some people that are permanent part-time, which work the maximum they can work and still draw their retirement pay. Then you have other people that might not work two hours a month. Well, it's not quite...
Several weeks of summer.
Yeah. So we had a hard trigger last year, saying you get a check every week, you're considered permanent part-time. But the fly in the hole with that is, those people can't make any more money. So, you know...
When you got a recommendation?
I don't get a loan.
What is your recommendation?
Two years ago is when it got confusing. In the past, it's always been full-time guy, the maximum. Anybody on probation, a full-time employee on probation that has maximum.
Part-time didn't get anything. I don't have problems.
Probation, you know, I think we discussed it last year. Is it right for somebody that's 11 months and two weeks into their probation to get the same amount as somebody that's only been here two weeks and make way forward?
Well, I think you just have to set it, go with it.
You have to have a relationship.
We can't meet every...
No. We can't agree.
You need to set the rule and go back.
And what was the holiday schedule? Two days for Christmas.
Thanksgiving is billed in Thursdays and Fridays. Holiday, it's always been Christmas Eve is the only distraction. Christmas falls on you.
And what about, is New Year's included in that?
This is Tuesday, Wednesday, also.
Two days on there? I say we give two days for Christmas and two days for New Year's, and I make a motion.
We got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
On the pay now, six fifty, full-time. Is that correct?
Yep.
Six fifty for full-time, probation employees have...
We need a motion for that?
Yeah.
I'll run that one motion. Okay. Okay, Mayor, you got a report for us?
I had a call from Child Care Resource Network in our old school building up there. They would like to replace the carpet that's in that place that's been there for ever since they've been in it, what have you. And they, there's tile in the hallways and what have you. The compass is just basically an office, and they do need replacing. We got an estimate on it, roughly $9,000. They're willing to pay half of it. They feel like that that's probably about all they can afford. So the question is, whether we want to go ahead and with that project or not?
Well, you know, we talked about once the school gets moved into Williamsburg, they build a reverse back to the city. We talked about in the past, looking over there.
Yeah, I was over there the other day and looking at it, and I told them that if we were going to look at doing that, do we even want to put that money into that building?
No, I agree with that. Of course, I think that's kind of up in the air right now, and frankly, it won't hurt to let this go for a year anyway, as far as that goes. But, I mean, it's not a health hazard or anything like that. They just offered to pay half, if we could get it done, they'd like to have it done. But I think they would love to move, too. And also, we include the daycare center, right? But the school's not, there's been some talk about some other things that the school might use that for, but I don't think there's been anything depth.
Reverse back to the CDC.
But I understand, one, if the school had a good use for it, I think we'll consider that, too. But right now, I don't know.
Well, I think there's enough room for both, probably.
There has been some, there has been some discussion about things that could be done there, but there's been no decisions made. I don't think that there's anything been discussed to do there that would probably utilize the entire facility. Of course, there's lots of things the school is wanting to do, particularly in the technical fields, you know. We're missing training for plumbers and carpenters and electricians, builders and that sort of thing, and they've got a program to do, they want to expand it. And so I think that probably we'll want to have a sit-down between the city and the school and just sort of come up with an overall plan about what that building could be most utilized for. But it appears that the goal still is to start the second semester of next year in the new school, January of 2021. Be quick, right?
We'll just put this on the table till that discussion is held.
What's the decision's made on what that's going to do, then we can visit that and...
I don't really mind replacing the carpet, but it's unnecessary if they're going to move.
Right. I think for them to put that much money into it, they're going to pay half of it, and then they're going to be moving.
Maybe they put a half of that into the new building.
Yeah, exactly.
I had a request from Hunter Stone to purchase a piece of property that we own down on Godfrey, south, just north of Builders' Park. And he says it's at a fair market value, so I wanted to just get everybody's opinion on that. If we want to do it, then we need to get an appraisal, and if we have some use for that property, then...
We're not using it now.
No, it's vacant lot.
We don't have any plans to use it. I think we need to be interested. He owns a business, I think, adjacent to it.
Right, he owns a business just north of it.
Yeah, we get an appraisal on it, see what wouldn't work out, which...
Right. Is that the property between the warehouse that's there and...
And that next building, yeah.
Where the old used, well, the old, there was a cottage in there near us.
It's 150 feet frontage, but there's two 25-foot easements, I assume, for streets or alleys or something that we might want to look at.
Does that property not go across the creek also? And the reason I'm...
I think it, I think it does.
That property was mine. At one time, my grandfather's a cotton warehouse. Okay. I'm not sure. Well, all right. You want me to take care of getting an appraisal done on it?
I would, yes.
You can do it.
If the council is willing to settle, then we need to...
Probably want an appraisal for you like that, so, you know. Which...
It's across creek already.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that, all of this would be good.
We've also had a request from Jet Polymer to purchase that property between them and the sports complex. They want to expand with low docks and things on that side of the building. I don't know the particulars yet, since talking stays. I kind of wanted everybody's opinion as to whether they want to proceed with that. Yeah, across the ditch, or right there at the ditch.
Would that add any additional jobs?
Now, they're saying that he's adding, well, see, when he started out, his 45 job, he got 145 now, and he's thinking about, he said, probably 20 more. It's not enough, the project's not enough for economic development to really give him incentives. It's enough to give him tax abatements based on what he spends on the building and everything, but other than that, he won't have.
Well, I would suggest that you have, he has a survey done of what he's wanting by, and then just let us get it. That way you can see exactly how it's going to affect the sports complex, and you can also have a particular description in order to put a value on it.
I'll get, he was supposed to get back in touch with me today, and we've held it together, so I'll get back with him, and we'll get that done. I think that's it.
Does anybody in the audience want to address the council on any issue or got anything? Done.
On November 15th at 10 a.m., I've got the RSA, Retirement Assistant of Alabama's Northeast Regional Representative coming to speak to us. And in the conference room, it's a big crowd that's looking here about the Tier 2, Tier 1 inversion we've all been talking about. Very confusing, and the best thing about it, come up, is they need to come talk to us as a whole, so I'd like you all of you to be there. So if we could do it in a work session, I feel like you all need to be there to hear what she has to say, and what she says. Those are decisions y'all are going to have to make. It's nothing that me, Andy, and the mayor can make.
Can you push that back?
Can you move that to 11, because that's the day the governor will be here.
It's the same day the governor's coming. Well, yeah, but to get it in and out, I don't know.
You may try and do that in a work session, call your...
Probably so, I would think.
We set the work session up later.
Have everybody there, you at least, whether you call it a work session or whatever you call it, if everybody's going to be there, you need notice to the media.
That's an important decision that's got to be made. We've got some time to make it, but I want the information to be accurate to make that decision. The other thing is, we're nearing the deadline for this Alabama firefighter benefit that the state passed this last session. It's a catch and policy, the dollar firefighter, you get, we have to pay the premium. I have all the information coming for that, and I'm going to have to make a decision on which plan we want to buy, so I'm just here to do it, don't we have to? Which plan...
We have to, which plan we're gonna buy. It's a $10 difference in premium per plan. But I'll have that information, I hope, in the month of November. If not, we have to have a decision and start the process by June.
Anybody else? Again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I would like to mention that we've got, I know, three leadership DeKalb students here. It's one of their requirements to be at a, attend a council meeting. Appreciate them choosing Fort Payne Council Meeting to come and be at. And we appreciate you guys being here. Don, we need to go into executive session.
I need to go into executive session.
Second.
We got a motion, second. Johnny? Yes?
Yes.
We will consider ourselves an executive session.